Thank you for joining us to attend tonight's meeting of the Westerville City Schools Board of Education. The agenda will be displayed on the screens in the front of the room. You may also follow along by connecting to the district's website, www.wsoh.org. Click on our district link, then select Board of Education, and then the Board Doc's Agenda, and select this evening's meeting. There will be two opportunities to address the board this evening, the first being Agenda Item 6.01. The first set of public comments is relative to Agenda Items 7.01 through 11.02. Please state the agenda items that you are referencing at the beginning of your comments. The second opportunity is Agenda Item 12.01. There is a sign-up sheet located on the table in the back of the room. Each speaker will have five minutes to address the board. And with that, Ms. Hendricks, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Byrd.
Here.
Dr. Nestor Baker.
Here.
Mr. Velardo.
Here.
Ms. Davidson.
Here.
Ms. Cotter.
Here. If everybody would stand and please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving on to the agenda. Items 3.01 through 3.03, I think, or at least the district recognitions, are going to be handled by Mr. Velardo.
Thank you, President Cotter. In my role as community engagement liaison, it's really my honor to represent the board in honoring the tremendous work that is done around the district from students, staff, and our community members. I'm going to go up to the podium, have some resolutions that we're going to read tonight. I'm going to invite Dr. Kellogg and the board members to come stand up front so we can shake some hands and congratulate some people for some great work. The first resolution that I have is for a number of organizations within our community. This is a resolution of appreciation for Lowe's, Ohio Health, Rousch Hardware, Status Solutions, and the City of Westerville Division of Police. Whereas, in 2016, Westerville North High School pupil Thomas Armstrong worked with school resource officer Adam Dross and Principal Kurt Yancey to equip every classroom with supplies to be used by students and teachers during times of crisis. And whereas the Westerville Division of Police and the School Solutions Network thought this was such a good idea that they joined forces to garner community support in order to donate emergency supplies to the 22 additional schools in the district. And whereas, community leaders and businesses responded generously by volunteering their time and donating enough provisions to equip 700 go-buckets, one for each classroom, with various items that could be of use during a natural disaster or lockdown situation, from first aid and safety supplies to food and sanitary products. Therefore, be it resolved that the Westerville City Schools Board of Education and Superintendent sincerely thank every participating individual and organization for the role they played in proactively addressing the need for students and staff to be prepared during an emergency. I'd like you to give a round of applause to each one of these organizations. At this time, I'm going to invite Mr. Scott Dorn to come forward. He's going to introduce each one of those organizations.
Thank you, Mr. Velardo. Good evening, President Cotter, Vice President Davidson, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg and Mrs. Hendricks. With us tonight, we have some of our most valuable members of the team that organized the project that donated more than 700 go-buckets for our students and staff to use at our schools during times of crisis. Only through the leadership and collaboration of these individuals and the entities that they represent, working with the common goal of student safety in mind, was this Herculean effort able to be completed. I would like to present to you some of the representatives from Lowe's Home Improvement Store, Ohio Health, Rousch Hardware, Status Solutions, and the Westerville Division of Police that are with us this evening. From Lowe's, from Lowe's Home Improvement Polaris Store, we have store manager Brian Ayliff, as well as Doug Brownfield. Lowe's was instrumental in this project by donating the buckets and lids and by providing much of the contents at a significantly discounted price. We should also recognize Westerville North High School athletic trainer John Coffey, who was instrumental in assisting the North High School student Thomas Armstrong in the original go-budget, go-bucket project that supplied Westerville North High School. Ohio Health was a financial donor to this project and supplied volunteers during Assembly And I'm hoping that we have Matt Smith with us here tonight. Come on up, Matt. Matt represents Rousch Hardware, and Rousch Hardware was, served a key role in donating materials and supplies to the project. I would also like to present to you members of School Solutions Network and Status Solutions, a Westerville-based company founded by Mike McLeod, a Westerville North alumni. Unable to be here tonight, but certainly someone from School Solutions Network who needs to be recognized is Lindsay Bannister, a Westerville South graduate. Lindsay and School Solutions Network gathered supplemental donations and supplies from other community partners and organizations, as well as garnered the volunteers through another community partner, Westerville Bridges. Lindsay did a remarkable job in working through the logistics of a project of this magnitude. From Status Solutions, we have Danielle Myers and Jacob Johnson. Status Solutions was the major donor to the go-budget, go-bucket project. It goes without saying that, without the financial support from Status Solutions, that this project would not have been possible. That sentiment also applies to all of the other partners mentioned here tonight. We'd also like to recognize Lieutenant Ron McMillan from the Westerville Division of Lieutenant McMillan was instrumental in the orchestration of this project, and as you might expect, he provided excellent leadership. Other members of the Westerville Police Department that played important roles in this project were Westerville North High School's resource officer Adam Dross and Sergeant Steve Fridley. Several members of the Police Department volunteered on Assembly Day as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dorn, and thank you really to all the organizations that have done so much to continue to support our schools. We have a, another resolution that we'd like to, another person we'd like to recognize. I'm going to call up Mary Ann Hines, who's going to present Danielle Pratt from Westerville North High School, the winner of the 10th grade essay competition for the 2018 Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Why don't you come on over here first? We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, not gonna embarrass you, but we just want to highlight the good work that you're doing. Art is an art essay and multimedia contest sponsored by the Ohio Civil Rights Commission. And Danielle, this is just an incredible thing that you've done, and we are really honored to recognize you here tonight, and I know you're going to share some more.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, it's my honor to introduce Westerville North Danielle Pratt as the sophomore state essay winner of the 2018 Dr. Martin Luther King Contest. It's sponsored by the Ohio Civil Rights Commission with support from PNC Bank, Honda of America, and Wright State University. It's intended to encourage students to reflect upon Dr. King's life, his philosophy, and his impact both on the civil rights movement and present-day America. It's also designed to challenge students to think about how civil rights and diversity affect their lives and how they can continue Dr. King's work in their own way. This year's topic wove both the shared philosophies of Dr. King and Mahat Gandhi. Students were asked to answer this prompt, "What change have you made, or will you make in yourself, to make the world a better place?" Danielle's essay, which was awarded first in the state among hundreds of submissions, talked about being the change that she wants to see in others, pursuing truth, learning new things, accepting people, and much more. She'll read her essay on February 2nd at an award ceremony to be held at Ohio State University's Urban Arts Space. I'd like to thank the board for recognizing Danielle and her distinct accomplishment. As her honors English II teacher, I can attest that she is dedicated and thoughtful. She's also a busy student. In fact, she just finished a bowling match and they won, and she's on her way to softball conditioning. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead. I don't get in front of Liz. We have one more resolution that we'd like to share as a part of our district highlights and recognitions, and this is a resolution from the board and superintendent. Resolution in support of Stand Up For Public Schools. Whereas, public schools not only provide the educational foundation each child needs in order to succeed in life, but they serve as a critical component of an informed democratic society. And whereas, traditional public schools in the state of Ohio serve more than 1.8 million students and employ more than 245,000 Ohioans full-time. And whereas, year after year, public schools in Westerville and across Ohio are among the best in the country, earning national recognition, landing on prestigious awards lists, and showcasing models of efficiency and achievement. And whereas, in addition to academics, public schools are instilling important lessons about community service, citizenship, and compassion. And whereas, public schools are the great equalizer, able to empower every child to fulfill his or her potential, regardless of race, gender, socioeconomic circumstance, or religious affiliation. Therefore, be it resolved that the Westerville City Schools Board of Education and Superintendent join the Ohio School Boards Association in coordination with the National School Boards Association in support of the Stand Up For Public Schools campaign, which celebrates public education's stellar performance in preparing today's children for tomorrow's challenges. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education and Superintendent join colleagues across the state in celebrating Public Education Week, January 21 through 27, this day, January 22, 2018. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 4.01. Are there any comments on the minutes or questions? We don't vote on the minutes, it's just a formality that we consider comments if there are any concerns. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 5.01. The financing, executive financing overview. I think we have somebody that's going to give a presentation, Dave Conley. If you want to come to the podium.
Yeah, I'd just like to introduce David Conley, President of Rock Mill Financial Consulting. He's a financial consultant for the district. He's worked with the district for about six years, and I'm just going to turn it over to him.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. It's always an honor, such a wonderful school district. I have a presentation this evening that is quite lengthy, but I think necessary. And I will be patient and go through it so that we have a full understanding of everything in here, but again, it's an honor to be in front of the board this evening, as well as your community. I am going to, ah, it worked, move through the presentation. First, again, just for the background on Rock Mill Financial, my company is a financial consulting firm that works exclusively with governments across Ohio. We work on a number of different things, ranging from financial forecasts and budgeting to financial management, which I'll touch on a little bit today, research and analysis, public information and communication, and tax management and reduction strategies. So, most recently, the majority of our school clients have been reaching out to us to find ways to keep taxes low or prevent increases in future taxation while still reaching the goals of the, of the school district. So, I do that quite a bit. And then, then turning to the debt issuance side of the ledger, when there's a facilities opportunity, providing guidance for the issuance of securities. So, to my knowledge, I'm the president of the firm. I'm the only firm of my type in the country, probably, if not the world. It's a unique combination of expertise. My number-one responsibility for the district and the residents is to assess the financial feasibility of projects that the board may be considering, that provide my opinion about whether or not it's a feasible attempt to, to payback. If at all possible, to identify financing options that will either lower or eliminate the need for new taxes in the future, to communicate those options to the board, which is why I'm here this evening, and to the community. And then, if the board makes the decision to proceed with this, with the financing, my responsibility is then to oversee that process on your behalf, to make sure that it's done at the least possible cost, lowest interest rates. I am sworn by law to uphold the best interests of the community's financial involvement with the, with the district, so at all times, I'm charged with being honest and candid, and sometimes that's good and sometimes that's bad, but ultimately, it's for one important goal, and that's to make sure that the taxpayers are represented appropriately when it comes to spending their dollars going forward. So, let me turn to what my assessment is. So, before I begin my engagement with my clients, I spend a very, very detailed amount of time to look over the financial condition of the government, as well as the, the financial practices of the government. And these are just my brief conclusions. The first is, if, isn't already known in my opinion, this district is, is well-managed and is extremely strong financially, but I will offer to you that it isn't just my opinion. Moody's Investor Service, which is a rating agency in New York City, has the same conclusion. They recently upgraded the district's debt rating to a AA1, we're one rating grade away from a AAA, which is considered excellent. So, the district's incredibly well-managed from a financial perspective. In addition to that, the board's policies and financial management are also excellent. So, it's difficult for administration to carry through and do things properly if the board doesn't also set the tone through its policies and through its direction. So, I want to make sure that I touch on that point as well. The third point, the existing debt that's outstanding for your district is incredibly low for a community of this size, for the number of buildings that you have, for the number of students that you educate. You've done a great deal from providing facilities with very little debt. Now, when I usually see that as an indicator, it tells me it's probably time for some attention to additional improvements to facilities. Typically, when you borrow money, after 30 years, it's a sign that the facilities might need some, some assistance. I can tell you from my review so far that I can confirm that certain projects of the district can be financed without issuing additional, without raising taxes. So, let me say that again. Sort of depending on the scope, we're currently sitting in a very good position. The reason that's possible is that we've done a really good job managing the district's taxes, and your current cash reserves are very strong. Looking forward, we think those reserves will also be reasonably strong. In addition to that, the district already has an existing, has two separate levies for permanent improvement purposes that are coming in. The revenues under that particular tax mechanism are also relatively strong and provide some flexibility for us. If we're interested in borrowing, we can use those reserves, or those revenues, to make payments on the borrowing, as opposed to putting additional taxes on the ballot. And then, the last point is that the size of the district's tax base continues to grow substantially. We had over a $200 million increase, which is the size of three school districts, just this year alone. So, with new businesses moving into the community and the growth of property that you have, that supports the tax revenues that support the operations of the district and your ability to pay for certain facilities without having to raise taxes. So, it's a positive going forward. So, let's turn to what types of projects are allowed to be financed. And generally, when I work with school boards and we begin to talk about the ability to borrow money, the question is asked, "What can we use the money for?" You know, how can we, what types of things can we address? So, I want to provide a quick summary of the key items that typically school districts look to finance. The first is any type of renovation or remodeling, addition and/or demolition to existing buildings is a allowable, financeable project. New construction of any facility, classrooms, and I can go down the list, that would be used by the school district. In addition to that, you're allowed to furnish and equip any facility. You may provide for financial, or for transportation vehicles, safety equipment, land acquisition, which, again, I'm not sure where you all stand, but on a forward-looking basis, this district, long-term, the value of land, or the cost of land, depending on which side of the ledger you're on, will only get higher, and long-term planning isn't a bad idea for land in the future. And then, lastly, some communities and school districts have partnered together to look at the use of space where a school facility might also serve a community purpose. And so, you're allowed to use facilities for library, community service centers, senior service space, healthcare facilities. All of these are possibilities under your ability to finance facilities. So, moving to the typical types of financings, and this is going to get a little dark, little, little more into the weeds, but I'd like to review it with you. So, the key to funding facilities is what type of tool might you use to, to finance that facility? So, the next two pages deal with the tools that are available to you. The most common is known as a bond issue. Bond issues work like a debt instrument or a loan, like you would get on a, on a home or a car. It's an obligation that, once you enter into it, you can't get out of it until you pay it off. So, if you're into a, if it's a 20-year bond, you're obligated to pay the bonds for 20 years. In Ohio, you can borrow using a 40-year term as a maximum for a bond issue. And most of the time, most of the time, if you would like to seek a bond issue, you have to put it on the ballot, get voter support. Bond issues are the most common way for school districts to finance facilities, and it's largely because school districts don't have any other revenue source available to issue the bond, so they have to actually ask the taxpayers for a tax levy to pay back the issuance of debt. The next instrument is something that is, well, I won't say anymore, it's not fairly new, a lot of districts are using it, but it's known as a certificate of participation, or what we call COPS. Certificates of participation function like a bond issue. So, you borrow money and you pay it back over a period of years. The difference between a COPS issue and a bond issue is that a COPS issue is not a debt instrument, it's a lease instrument. And as a lease, lease instrument, you're not required to go to the voters to actually issue the securities. So, you can borrow using a COPS instrument without getting voter approval, as long as you can identify the revenue source to pay it back. So, that's the key fundamental of a COPS issue. The reason it's not considered debt is, as I mentioned, it functions as a lease, like you would lease a car, or a copier, or a school bus. It's subject to annual appropriation by the board. So, each year, you're presented the budget, and then the board adopts the budget, including the, the lease payment for the COPS issue. You have the option, as a board, not to actually reappropriate the payment for the lease. And within that capacity, it designates the instrument as being a non-debt instrument, and therefore not subject to debt laws, and not subject to voter approval. One of the things that I want to point out right now is, one of the key challenges to using a COPS issue is that if, at any point in the future, a future board decides not to appropriate the lease payment to make the payment, the facility that you financed with the lease can be repossessed, if you will. Now, kind of hard to repossess a school building, but sort of imagine the, the situation where the landlord says, "You're evicted," because the board did not appropriate the lease payment. So, that's the number-one negative to using a COPS as a financing instrument. But on the practical side, the question has to be asked, under what circumstances would a school board say, "We're not going to make the payment on our, on our loan"? It would take some pretty extreme circumstances to make that occur. So, think about the practicality of not appropriating the funds, knowing that the building would be, would be foreclosed, if you would, for not paying it. But more and more school districts are using this as an option to finance school buildings, largely because they don't need to go to the taxpayers for tax dollars to pay it back, so they're actually just allowed to do the financing without voter approval. There is no maximum for how much you can borrow using a certificate. It's limited only to the amount of annual payment that the treasurer's office and myself feel is safe for the school district to, to commit to the repayment of the obligation. Well, you guys are following along pretty well. Usually, people, now their eyes are like this. Okay, so, let's move to the next page. In addition to bonds and COPS, school districts may also borrow against a permanent improvement levy, you, as a debt instrument, and it's known as a tax anticipation note. A tax anticipation note allows you to borrow up to 10 years for, for the maximum term, and one-half of what can be collected from a, a permanent improvement levy over a 10-year period. So, if your permanent improvement levy would bring $10 million in over 10 years, you're allowed to borrow $5 million of the 10 million. It does not have to be a new levy, it can be an existing levy, which you have, and the amount's only limited to the amount of revenues coming to the district. We are currently paying, this district is currently paying on an existing tax anticipation note. So, that particular note will be paid off in the next three years, and you'll see in a second, the money that we're currently paying on that note can be redirected to yet another financing in the future. So, that's one of the revenue streams that we've identified. The last financing instrument, if you want to call it that, would be cash. The school district and other governments have the ability to plan in advance for capital improvements, major capital improvements, so you, on an annual basis, can set money aside from the general fund for the purposes of paying for capital projects. This is becoming more and more common with school districts as their general fund balances have started to grow. Many districts, following the recession, tightened their budgets and tightened their belts. As a result, fund balances grew in the general fund, and now they have the ability to begin setting aside money to plan for major capital improvements, and this district is not too dissimilar from that. It is really beneficial to reduce the cost of construction, and again, doesn't require voter approval, so we have that as an option. Typically, when you repay a financing with property taxes, it would Typically, when you repay a financing with property taxes, it would typically use the support of voted bond issue. Property taxes in the form of a permanent improvement levy are collected. Now, you all are collecting currently $9 million a year in permanent improvement funds. Those funds are used to maintain the existing facilities as they are today. You'll notice I have an asterisk on that number. The reason that I do is that the $9 million will actually grow over time as your tax base gets larger. So it's currently $9 million today, but will likely be substantially greater down the road, especially as some of our abatements start to expire and mature on the tax base. We're also able to use operating levies as a source of repayment for debt, although not highly recommended because you want to reserve that for operations. More districts are looking at using income taxes as a source of repayment for debt. There's two forms, traditional and earned income taxes. Currently, we're not talking about that as an option for this district, but you never know, as you proceed down the road. Other sources, we talked about general funds, cash. In some cases, communities and school districts are able to pay for their financings through the money they save. So if you have older buildings that will be replaced, that are more expensive to operate, that could be replaced with a newer building that's less expensive to operate, the savings allows you to use that toward supporting a financing, if you could. There's also the option to see corporate donations, and I see tonight with the Go Bucket that, you know, you have a very active corporate community, and I wouldn't rule that out as an option going forward. And we exist, currently have today, a number of tax abatements that are in place that could present the opportunity to look at corporate donations and pilots, what we call payments in lieu of taxes, going forward as new companies seek abatements from the school district. But these are all just core resources to look at for financing. So, let's talk about dollar amounts that are available. With a voted bond issue, the state has a predetermined maximum that you can finance. That predetermined maximum is nine percent of your assessed valuation, which today is $183 million. So if you were considering putting a bond issue on the ballot to build buildings, the maximum you could place on the ballot would be $183 million. With a permanent improvement levy, we went through the math a second ago. Based on your current permanent improvement levy revenues, if we went with a ten-year tax anticipation note, we could borrow $45 million, and that would be using all of your permanent improvement funds. It would leave you, we'd have a payment of $5 million a year under that particular structure. But it would only give you $45 million to work with if, just to sort of give you some sizing. On a thirty-year certificate of participation, if we maxed the available permanent improvement levies that you have, the district could borrow $155 million. And that's using all of your permanent improvement levy revenues. I would not recommend that as an option because it leaves you nothing to continue to maintain the other buildings. I just provided these numbers just for background purposes. School district income taxes are done in quarter-percent increments. If you were to do a quarter-percent increment on a traditional income tax, that would net you $168 million. On an earned income tax, which is a tax that only taxes W-2 wages, it does not tax pensions, retirement, social security, unemployment, things that are non-earned income, you would be able to borrow $145 million roughly. And I think we discussed the other sources of revenue that could be identified and contributed toward providing a financial structure. So, let's now drill into your circumstances. When I've started working on this project with Dr. Kellogg and with Bart Griffith, we worked in reverse order. And in reverse order, what we tried to first figure out is, if we tried to identify money that was available to you without seeking additional money from the, from the community, so just our basic resources that are available today, how much money could we raise to address facility needs? This is a very simplified table that takes a look at potential revenue that could be contributed toward a financing. And, let's see if I can find my laser. Watch me turn this off. Okay, I can see that very well. But we looked at three categories. The first is the general fund, and whether or not the school district could support contributing money from the general fund. The second is using funds that were available in the first PI levy, because again, you have two. And then funds are available from the second PI levy. And what you'll see on this table is that, in this particular model, contributing $3 million a year from the general fund, $3 million a year from the first PI levy, and then $1 million a year from the second PI levy, which would run for a period of about thirty years, that in total, that stream of payments would support seventy, nearly $75 million. So, just in general, using funds that exist to the district today, we could support the payments of $75 million. But the skin is requiring a contribution of $9 million from the general fund.
Guys, got a quick, so Dave, we mentioned earlier, the district already is using PI fund dollars to pay down a tan. We have three more years of payments. I think that payment's roughly $3 million or just a hair under three, right? So, that's not in this model.
That's correct.
So, in those first three years, we have $3 million out of the PI, it's really almost $6 million off of the nine to 10 that's available.
That's correct.
In those first three years?
That's correct.
Okay. So that would mean available to us somewhere between $3 and $4 million for any other capital improvement needs funded from the permanent improvement.
Right. So it would reduce, so you would be going from roughly six down to, to $4 million a year available for PI.
And so people understand, there are a variety of things other than buildings that we pay out of PI. One of them is buses. We have a bus cycle. We replace X number of buses on an annual basis, that's in there. A couple other components as well, so, just wanted some clarity on the numbers. Thank you.
Right. And again, you want to be careful, permanent improvement dollars are, are there for, in some cases, known capital and maintenance needs, in other cases, unknown capital and maintenance needs. So it's never really a good idea to commit all of those funds to a financing source. But, again, our early thinking on this is that this would be a manageable financial structure, if the board would consider that. I have outlined what the pros and cons are. And the first is that it maximizes the amount. So if you were to say to me, "David, what amount could we commit that would be reasonably safe and conservative for the district that we could dedicate toward a project"? And I would say that this is that picture. So this is the upper end of that picture. So it maximizes what's available to you. The con is that it is using $9 million of general fund cash, and it's a con in that we don't have a crystal ball in knowing what funding will look like for the district from an operating perspective in the future. It is possible that you contribute $9 million from the general fund for facilities, and then two years later, state funding changes, and then you say to yourself, "Why did we spend that money"? So that's kind of the challenge that you have on using general fund dollars. In addition to that, it lowers the PI funds that might be necessary for other needs of the district. But within, in the global sense, this is a reasonable picture, financing picture for the district to consider. It's not excessive, in my opinion. So the next version of it is, we went to a picture to say, what if we wanted to preserve our cash in the general fund for operating purposes, just to make sure that we're in good shape going forward? And that we also reduce the contributions from our permanent improvement levy. So this is more, more of your, your really safe position, how much could we support? So reducing our general fund contribution to zero, reducing our permanent improvement levy to $1.5 million from $3 million for the first three years, and then lowering our contribution from the second PI levy to $600,000 a year from $3 million, that allows us to finance $56 million. So this is a sort of best-of-both-worlds, very, very conservative on an operating perspective, but still raising cash for facilities purposes. So again, I outlined the pros and cons. It leaves more money for your operations, it leaves more money for ongoing maintenance. And as a con, it requires additional funding to address larger project needs. So if you're looking at a project that would be more than $56 million, this wouldn't be the solution by itself. You'd have to do something else. And that something else would be this particular table. The school district has, yes, John?
Kind of before we jump to this part.
Yeah.
So there are solutions between this and the other, right?
Right. So we could, we could increase the dollar, the dollar contributions between this and the $75 million and increase the amount that you can finance. So it doesn't have to be one or the other, it's a scalable process.
So my, my memory was, an additional $1 million a year of payment generates $19 million more of project revenue.
That's correct.
So anything in between. And then on the second scenario, if you go to that one, on this one, in those first three years, we're now committing the roughly $3 million from the PI we already have, plus $1.5, so we have $4.5 for three years out of the nine or 10. And then, the, the $3 million that we're paying now rolls off, and our, our payment is a little bit more than we're paying now, so, in terms of your bank account, this three years and ever, a little bit more, and then...
Right.
But anything in between $56 and $70 is some number can be built. Okay.
Yeah. Could be sort of managed, in my opinion, fairly well.
Okay. Thank you.
But this particular structure is optimum from an ongoing operating perspective, which we always have to be mindful of, you know, there's an operating cycle. Yes, sir.
So I just had a quick question. I'm actually reeling back just a slide or two relative to the, the potential maximum bond issue. The assumption is the maximum total available based upon current state financials for the district, but is it also an assumption based on a forty-year maximum term limit?
For the...
183?
For this, for the seventy-four...
The bond.
For the, for the bond issue, let's go back to this table.
What, what were the time dimensions around that 183?
So, bond issues have a maximum of forty years, regardless of the, the principal amount.
Right. But we calculated a maximum, a couple slides forwards, of 183. What term is that based on?
That's not based on a term. It's, the 183 is nine percent of your assessed valuation. So the state dictates that a school district can't borrow more than nine percent of its tax base.
Okay.
And that's where the 183 comes from. The, the term, the forty-year term, is, is a maximum that the state also sets. It says that if you were to do a bond issue, the longest term that you could issue bonds for is forty years.
They don't, but they don't put any structure around any terms beyond that? That's odd. Because the risk is in the term.
Those are the only two primary concerns. Now, the thing that you should know is that a, a bond issue term has to be tied to the life of the improvement that you're making. So, for you to do a forty-year bond issue, you'd have to spend all of the money on something that has a forty-year life, which most school districts don't do. The building itself would have a forty-year life, but if you furnish it, and if you do site improvements, things of that nature, the average starts to come down. And that's why you see today, most school districts have terms of 35, 36, 37 years, largely for that purpose. Yeah. Now, the, the term and the dollar amount do have a direct relationship when it's time to look at the tax rate. So when you calc, and that's the table I was almost to, that, that shows you how you calculate the tax rate based on the, the term of the financing. Any questions back on that page, anyone?
Just additional clarification on the debt limit. That doesn't account for debt we already own, that would have to be subtracted from the 183?
That's already subtracted.
Oh, it is, okay.
Yeah. So the 183 is already net of your outstanding debt.
Thank you.
The calculation, yeah. So, okay. So we are now looking at, I wanted to provide for you an analysis that, that asked the question, per one mil that we put on the ballot. So if we wanted to go on the ballot, and we picked one mil as an arbitrary millage rate, how much could we issue in bonds? And the answer to that question is $53,250,000. So if the district were so inclined to put some portion of a project, per one mil, you can raise $53,250,000. And then I highlighted, you see the yellow band there, it says home price, $187,400. That's the median home value for homes in Westerville. That translates into $5.47 a month, which is not bad to raise $53 million. So I, I offer that so that if you wanted to think somewhat creatively about maybe mixing and matching your choices, now, you could obviously put everything that you wanted to finance on the ballot for the voters to approve. So in essence, for two mils, you can borrow well over $106 million. One mil, $53,250,000.
Yeah, a quick one here as well. Really, I appreciate your thoroughness in this. We compliment the treasurer's office often in being very meticulous with us. I mean, we, we like to think we're, well, the four of them are reasonably intelligent, and I'm, and I'm trying to get all of this.
Right.
Very quick question. I think it will be applicable down the road. The 187 median home price, you said that is Westerville?
Correct.
Is that Westerville City, or is that Westerville School District?
It's the Westerville School District.
Thank you. That's, okay.
Yes.
That's another surprise to me. Thank you.
Yeah. So I, that's the most recent census...
That's awesome.
...number. And, you know, some communities will use $100,000 as the, you know, you'll hear the tax rate on a $100,000 home. We wanted to use something that was a little more realistic, yeah. And then reminding everyone, the median is the, is the house in the middle. So, from the top to the bottom, that's the one right in the middle. So I want to provide that, and then, Mr. Bird, the, on this, I can't, I'm not sure where my, my laser is, but in this particular model, you'll see the term of the bond issue says 37 years, three lines down. That's an estimate on my part. It could be less, it could be more, you know, longer. It's ultimately a decision that the board would make if you wanted to actually make it shorter, because the interest cost is rather substantial when you borrow this amount of money. Using four and a quarter percent as the current interest rate, we hope that those interest rates don't go up anymore. But today, that would be a conservative estimate.
So do these, do these fall under the same strictures as, as levy initiatives where you're collecting to a dollar amount, not a percentage?
Exactly. Yep. That's exactly right. So once the bonds are sold, the bond payment is fixed, and every year, the county auditor collects a tax rate to the bond payment amount, so it's just like an emergency levy.
So there, I'm gonna ask this question, assuming that the state legislature has never visited this or never taken it on. Is there any mechanism, then, that, that atones for growth in rooftops and our commercial businesses?
Mm-hmm.
Where those people are then paying a fair share and the cost is reduced to the overall taxpayer?
Right. And with bond issues in particular...
Yeah.
The, the, the taxing mechanism is designed to reduce the taxes on existing taxpayers as new taxpayers enter the...
Okay.
...enter the equation. So, and that's both new taxpayers from a residential perspective and a commercial perspective.
Okay.
Now, our growth, and I have a whole separate presentation on the growth of the, of the district itself, we have a sizable amount of growth that will be happening in the next ten years, largely because of the, the abatements that will be expiring. So the district has hundreds of tax abatements that will actually start to mature in the next few years. We're already seeing some results of that right now. So your, the, the residents of the community will see a lowered tax rate for your, for your fixed revenue levies, like an emergency levy or a bond issue, simply because abatements are gonna start to expire. And we're talking hundreds of millions of dollars in tax base. So, it's a, I, I kind of joke with the team because it's sort of the gift that keeps on giving in this district. I mean, wonderful things are going to happen financially. So we have this at our, at our disposal. So, so now we're at the point where you have these options that are available to you. You can consider financing a project using up to $75 million of certificates of participation, and scale it anywhere between $75 million down to $50. You can sort of augment a smaller COPS issue with a voted bond issue to get feedback from the community. Some of my clients like to put issues on the ballot just so they get feedback from the community about their opinion on the project. The challenge that you... The challenge that you run is that if the community votes no, then you're left wondering, does that mean they don't like the project, or they didn't like the tax, or just what, what is the circumstance? So you're, the, the key variables really to think about is, you know, what, what is in fact the scope of the project? Is it one project, is it four projects, is it, you know, five projects? What would be the estimated total cost? So are we talking twenty million, forty million, a hundred and ten million? That helps also frame what type of financing instrument you proceed with. The third, and probably most important, is timing, how quickly do we need something? Do we want it starting this year, are we okay waiting two years? And the reason I say that, if you opted for a financing structure that was on the ballot, that you went to the voters with, the earliest you could get to the voters would be November, and the earliest you could borrow money would be March of twenty nineteen, which means you're gonna start design probably in twenty nineteen, may not be able to get to bidding until twenty twenty, and then new facilities twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. So it's a much longer timeframe than starting now, but just so you have some perspective on, on how the timing comes together. And the last point is really other, all the other considerations that come to mind, such as community input. You know, are you gonna, you know, really go out, gather input from the community about both the use of, of a non-voted financing versus a voted financing, about the type of project they want, about the timing that they want? So all of those things come together to help us figure out which particular financing option makes the most sense for the district.
Quick question. You mentioned the timing for a bond issue, what is the timing for a COPS issue?
So, the, the next page, great segue, the next page, I show, I show the timing for the bond issue, and I mentioned, if you were to target being on the ballot, the board would have to determine the scope on July the ninth, the board meeting, you would also file your state consent, that's the, that's the request to issue debt from the state, the superintendent of the state. Then you would have to pass a resolution of necessity, which is the, the resolution that asks the county auditor to confirm the millage rate. Once the auditor comes back with the millage rate, you would pass a resolution to proceed on August the sixth. The treasurer would file with the board of elections on August the eighth, and that puts you on the ballot for November. If you were doing certificates of participation, you see that bottom line there, it says "at the board's discretion," which means, we go to the next page, once you know what it is you would like to finance, you have to determine your scope of work. Two weeks from that date, and that's because we have to prepare the legal documents, the legislation for you all to adopt, the board could pass a resolution authorizing the issuance of certificates. Ninety days after that, we would finish the documents that's used to sell those securities in the market, we would get a rating on those securities, and then we would sell the securities fifteen days after we received the rating, and another fifteen days we would close. So roughly four months, five months from the date that you knew what you wanted to do, this is a conservative schedule, we could have money in the bank so that you could start construction.
Dave, as we think about the certificates of participation, you were talking about the lease reality of what these are, and you talked about foreclosure if a board down the road was unable to pay, or chose not to pay, or whatever.
Correct.
Are there any other reasons that this particular lease could be foreclosed on?
The only is not appropriation. So, the, outside of you not making the payment, there would be no other trigger for, because you basically control all the aspects of the lease, it's, it, in reality, it's your facility, and to a degree, you're leasing from yourself, you, but you do create a mechanism to protect the investors that lend you the money, that say, this bank is gonna oversee the leasing of this property, if we fail to make our payment, the bank has the right to lock the doors and, and keep us out. So the foreclosure process is really a process of trying to get you to pay, make the annual payment, and if you're not willing to pay, the bank then has the right to lease the property to another entity, if there was someone else interested in the facilities or the improvements.
So I heard you say other school districts like this funding mechanism, the COPS.
Yes.
Have you ever heard of a school district not paying?
To my, yeah, no, and I, and I should've said at the outset, I was one of the very first to do a certificate of participation for a school district, I probably have done the majority of them in the state of Ohio, since they started being used, there's now well over a hundred districts that have used certificates of participation and close to a billion dollars financed using them, and there has not been to date a district that has not appropriated the annual payment. So there have been no defaults on a school district certificate of participation. And I go back again to the practice, you know, practically speaking, it's the equivalent of borrowing money. So would a board borrow money with the intent of not paying it back? And the only circumstances that could exist would be that there is a new board that's anti-tax, and they wanna make, make a statement. But they're making a statement at the risk of, you know, ejecting children into the parking lot, which is not very likely. The second is that the district has financial problems, and if the district has financial problems, you'll have to make a very serious decision, should we cut, should we not make a payment for a building that, that we're educating children in, or should we make cuts somewhere else in our budget? Now, the nice thing is that we've identified revenues that are separate and distinct from, if we go with the more conservative version, your operating money. So we're making a commitment, or could be making a commitment, that's strictly from monies that are all, that are designated for capital, as opposed to operations. But the, the seventy-five million dollar model has us using nine million a year from operations, so, somewhere in between that and the, the other version. So you could take, opt for a more safe approach in using the permanent improvement levy only.
Would you consider both of those, the seventy-five and the fifty-six million, those two charts, would you maybe characterize those as, would you characterize those as kind of the upper end of the conservative and lower end of the conservative?
Yes, yes. You know, I spent some time working through, just looking at the district's financial operations and your, your current financial condition, at the outset, I said we were in, in extraordinary financial shape. It's a matter of opinion as to how much you should have in your general fund, you have an ample amount of in the general fund from a, from an operating perspective today. I believe that you would not severely injure your financial operations by contributing, three million dollars a year is designated. I wouldn't recommend taking all nine million out at once, but kinda burn it down a little bit to sort of see how things are going before you fully commit to it. But, but this is a, is this is a, a safe, a safe picture at seventy-five million. And, I mean, again, I don't have any, any hesitation making that recommendation to you. But there is legitimate rationale behind a more conservative approach as well, because we don't have the benefit of a crystal ball five years from now, if our financial condition is substantially worse than we thought, we won't be happy with ourselves that we spent nine million dollars out of the general fund, okay? So this one gives us that much more comfort that we won't, we won't blame ourselves for making too rash of a decision to sp, to spend cash upfront. But again, it does lower how much cash we can contribute to a facilities project, and may push us into looking at a ballot initiative, or just simply a reduced project, so.
Dave, um, two parts, one, I think the answer to this one's obvious, but I think I'll ask it anyway. We don't have to do one COPS.
Right.
There could be multiple over time periods, as you bring on projects, and you can stagger that component. Two, can you talk a little bit about interest rates, the difference between COPS, TANs, and bond interest rates, and our current rating, and the relationship of all that from, we're getting to AAA and all those components?
Right. The, the first thing, the most important thing that you know is that all of these financing structures are like Lego blocks, and you can, you don't have to do it all as a single block. We can actually do a certificate of participation for thirty million dollars, come back two years later and plug in a twenty million dollar block, come back another two years later and plug in another thirty million dollar block, and you can build your structure around, you know, increments of a project, or of a series of projects. The same is true with, with using tax anticipation notes. Our tax anticipation note authority never goes away, because we have permanent, permanent, permanent improvement levies, continuing permanent improvement levy. So as long as those levies exist, we're able to do tax anticipation notes, and you could piece tax anticipation notes on top of certificates as well as bond issues. So you have a lot of flexibility on how you piece things together based on a project. Now, the financing instruments all have different costs associated with it. Your interest rate is your second largest cost to a financing, other than the project itself. So we have to be mindful that the interest rates will cost the district and ultimately the taxpayers, on how it comes together. The least expensive financing would be a tax anticipation note, largely because it's a short, ten-year instrument, and it's a bond, it's a, it's a, it's a debt instrument. The most expensive would be a certificate of participation, it has a higher interest rate associated with it, because if you're the investor, and you lend me seventy-five million dollars, but tell me I can walk away on an annual basis, I expect a higher rate of return for that risk that you won't pay me back. Typically, those interest rates have been in the neighborhood of a half percent, but in recent years, the difference between the interest rate for a certificate of participation and a bond issue are much closer together, because the default rates are so low, but there's still a difference. So it's anywhere from ten to twenty basis points, point one zero percent to point two zero percent. May not sound like a lot on, on that basis, but when you put point two percent on a seventy-five million dollar, thirty-year financing, it's a few million bucks. So it's, it is actually a decent amount of money. One of the goals of doing a transaction like this is to try to get the rating for a COPS issue as high as possible. So I mentioned to you, investors look for a higher interest rate for COPS because of the higher risk. The rating agencies have the same attitude. If we are a AAA-rated government, our certificates of participation will be one rating grade below our regular rating. So right now, we're rated double A one, if we were to do COPS, we would be rated, the COPS would be rated double A two, so one grade below, about twenty basis points differential. Strategically speaking, and I wanna be, I don't wanna, I wanna manage expectations, when Moody's upgraded us to a double A one, they very clearly said to us that this is a AAA district. But in order for them to move us from a double A three, which is what we were, or, I'm sorry, double A two, to a AAA, would have been a two-rating grade increase, and politically speaking, the rating agency doesn't like to move credits in two, in two jumps at a time. However, I believe that the next time we go to them with a bond issue, not a COPS issue, with a bond issue, the district will be upgraded to a AAA. In which case, a following COPS issue, a subsequent issue following that upgrade, would likely have a double A one rating. So one particular rate, uh, interest rate strategy could be to seek a AAA rating on a bond issue, and then follow that with our COPS issue, so not lead with a COPS issue, but lead with a bond issue. The challenge in that whole thing is assuming that interest states, interest rates stay flat. So, if rates are four and a quarter today, but five and a quarter a year from now, the strategy doesn't work, because we will have been AAA rated, but at a higher interest rate than what we are today.
You, you gave the example from four to five, and, and our treasurer over here just about had a meltdown, so I'm, I'm just saying, please don't do that again.
Well, you know, I, one thing that I want to make sure you all are aware of, tax reform, the, you know, the tax reform act and the change in corporate taxation has had, and, maybe, I'll, I'll frame it this way, but maybe is not so, but an unintended effect on tax-exempt interest rates, which, when you borrow, you borrow using a tax-exempt interest rate. The largest investors in municipal bonds, tax-exempt bonds, are corporations. Corporations now are being taxed at a lower rate than they were last year. So in order for a tax-exempt bond to be as attractive to a corporation last year, you now have to offer a higher interest rate to those corporations to have the same, same after-tax benefit to those folks. So indirectly, if you think about it, not just with Westerville, but with every government across the United States, the cost of local taxes have to go up as a result of higher interest rates related to the tax reduction on the federal government side. So our borrowing costs could in fact be higher when we do this because of tax reform, and I've already built that into our current interest rate model, just to, just to protect us from it. And there are other reasons to, it might be a little higher, but, but we're keeping our eye on that process as we, as we go along, to look at it.
Just for clarity, 'cause basis points can have different meanings in different industries and practices, twenty basis points is point two percent?
That's correct, point two zero percent.
Thank you.
So, any other general financing questions? This is an important conversation as we get through it, because there's a lot of decisions to be made. So on our options variables, I've, I've covered the scope, the cost, the timing, and then other concerns that you might have. We've touched on the timeline for bonds, the timeline for certificates of participation. Tax anticipation notes are about the same timeline as you would for certificates of participation, maybe a little bit faster. And I, I put that last, because right now, I don't see a tax anticipation note as being the instrument to use. It's, it's, it's effective, but with a ten-year maximum payback, it puts additional cash flow stress on the, on the permanent improvement levy. So I wouldn't recommend it unless we were using it as a block in, in a more complicated financing structure. So at this stage, the real key for the board is to, is to identify and sort of prioritize the projects, I realize there's a number of, a number of projects to be considered. And that may include having some community input along the way, and I know you've been active in doing that. Developing some decent cost estimates, which is always a challenge, and they're forever changing, so, I know Dr. Caloglu's had a lot of communications, it's a very, it's a very challenging process to get reasonably good cost estimates. In some cases, you need to hire an architect to do some pre-design work to help you really narrow it down, because it's important that we start out with a good number. We don't, there's nothing worse than getting a number, and then six months later, finding out we're twenty million dollars off the mark. Come up with a, a good approximated timeline for construction, and then at that point, I can come back and, and present to you more specific options between, you know, one choice or the other, and then review the pros and cons of the financing instruments, and then you would vote to say, let's go with option one, or option two, or option three, I'll get the legislation together, get it back to you, and then we would start getting the money together to put in the construction fund, so you could get going. And then, in the event that, you know, we get to that point, you then would retain an architect if it wasn't already the pre-designed architect to do, once you have the money, because the architect's fees are pretty expensive, to do the whole thing at that point. So, that's it for the presentation.
So I have a question.
Yes.
So with all the options, really, the soonest would almost be two years if we went the bond route?
Right, if not longer, I mean...
If not longer.
Yeah, I mean, there's, the, the risks, so this, I tell my clients this all the time, and it's kinda hard to have them have an appreciation for it until they've lived it. The challenge with time is that things change.
Right.
And so what we know today might well be different than what we know one year from now. And, again, I'm not trying to guide you in any direction, I just, my job is to tell you the pros and cons of how it is. We may think today that we can do this project if the voters vote it yes in November, and that we've got a nice schedule, then we get down the road, and the state of Ohio says that not only do you have to build a storm shelter, but we now expect you to build an underground parking garage for every student at the high school. And that's an extra two million bucks. And then we find ourselves trying to figure out just exactly how do we, how do we address that issue? Or the federal government decides to change the rules on taxing, the taxation of municipal bonds, you know? bonds, you know? And people say that those things aren't possible, but we just watched the Tax Reform Act go through, that's, you know, questionable. And so we don't know what we don't know, and there are things that can happen that we get to this point next year, we pass a bond issue, and we still can't do what we thought we wanted to do. And we have to take a different, a different course. So we might find ourselves delayed by six months while we're figuring out that course. And then, so if everything goes really smoothly and there aren't any changes, then yeah, we, you know, you're looking at 2022 to have a building or a renovation or something that you, that you can get your kids into, but it could be longer.
But the possibility exists in the timing of this, depending on the scope of the project, that if the board felt comfortable that there were elements that were a go regardless of a bond vote, could be financed through a TAN prior to a bond. What you missed there is the opportunity for change on the interest rate on the TAN, on the COPS, right? And the timing of a construction project and when you need it might change how much COPS you take early to get things going and then post-bond issue the rest of a COPS. If a bond fails, that changes the scope of the project, but you're able to move forward with the non-voted portion at that point. So as Dave said, there's multiple ways to do this, and I like the discussion about interest rates because you think, well, let's wait and get a better, and the waiting might get you a better rating and you pay more anyway because of interest rates, so.
But your point is a really good point. So again, you have multiple things that, to deal with. You could very easily carve out some of the projects that are most important, that maybe aren't as expensive, and start on those right away, okay? And you can use a TAN, we could even use a COPS issue. It may not be.
Borrow from the general fund, right, and then pay it back?
And you can also borrow from the general fund and reimburse yourself at some later point. So you don't necessarily have to wait until you have everything figured out, especially if you could come to a mutual agreement on the most important things and, and deal with that portion first and then work on the expanded plan to be put into place a little bit later. And so that would create some flexibility, it could allow you to address some of your more critical issues right away. But you know, it is, I mentioned in some prior meetings, it's difficult to make decisions when you have the flexibility that you have. I wish most of my clients had the flexibility that you have, but it does make it more challenging to realize, wow, I can make a decision to just take care of $75 million worth of capital needs right now and not have to wait. But with that comes a lot of decisions that you have to make in order to pull the trigger on that. Again, most of my school clients have to go on the ballot and beg for every penny, and we have at our disposal quite a bit of money without asking the voters for it. And again, that brings with it the challenge of, should you ask their opinion or should you just go ahead and do what you need to do? And there's no right answer. I have some clients that proceed without doing something with voter support and other clients that opt to put something on the ballot as an indication with, with the voters approving it, that they are in support of the plan, whatever the plan might be.
Yeah, and I appreciate you saying that a couple of times, and I'm just really thankful for the presentation and the way you've walked us through and allowed us to ask questions and just kind of question a lot of things. The piece of the reminder that you can finance things, you can finance some of this in building block, I think you, Lego, I think you said, kind of piecing it together, just a helpful reminder. And I know it's not exactly the same thing, and I hope that this is received in the way that I intend it. But a couple of times, you talked about getting the community's input and voice and vote in there. And one of the things that I, I think, I'm quite sure all of us feel really good about is that we've actually started that process, not in a voting financial piece, but in a, what do we want to move forward, what is the community interested in piece, had, and just a wonderful scope of 20 or so community members on the, on the, on the facilities, 20, 26, something, just met dozen times and hours and looked at buildings and toured. So their kind of voice and vote is in there already, and now we're going through a pretty thorough community engagement process. So kind of getting the voice and vote, and I know it's different, a vote for a bond is one thing and a vote for, but we're, I think, being pretty diligent about getting the community's voice of, you know, what are you passionate about, what do you feel good about? And again, I recognize it's different than a vote for a bond kind of deal because that's the dollars and that's how people, I get that. But I just wanted to say kind of out loud, I'm just very pleased that we've kind of begun that already. And for us, there's just really the, the hard work, I would say, for us, the hard work of working on the board and, and administration, okay, what, what are really important issues here and how do we look at finances and where do we borrow from and where do we begin? And that's just, those are not inconsequential things. And I pray, I, I hope, but I actually pray, that the community really understands, we, we take that piece and this kind of presentation very seriously. And I'm, I'm sorry I'm talking too long, I'm not getting, I don't want to get cranked up, I'm just, I'm just saying that.
Well, to your point, I'm not sure how many hours we've been working on the financialing, the financial modeling. I mean, we have many, many hours of meetings to develop this and meetings with some of the community members as well. So, and again, I'll commend you all in the way that you've approached this entire process, starting with, you know, is there a way to do something without increasing taxes? I mean, that was the very first thing that I heard. And they said, okay, David, you have to help us figure out how we can take care of our facilities without costing the taxpayers more money. And that's what we've, that was the basis of how we started and then talking to the community members in the, in the sessions. So.
And I promise, this is the last thing I'm going to say, I promise. And aren't we fortunate, and you've said this a couple of times, but, but I'm going to say it. Aren't we fortunate that for a number of years now, the administration, the finance and the board, and I would say previous boards, have tried to be faithful with money?
Yes.
And we are where we are, not because something fell out of the sky.
That's correct.
But because the community is a very supportive community, and we try to respond to that support by being authentic with what we are trying to do. So we're in a good place for good reasons.
That's correct.
That's all I'm going to say.
Right, I started the presentation with extremely well-managed, you know, not extremely well-managed.
Any other questions?
I would, just another, so area of caution to, as we think about this, is if you look at the, if we take the recommendations from the committee as they stand, and if you did everything on the list, regardless of how we finance it, did everything on the list, it means we're adding to our fleet of buildings beyond what we have today, which means you have general fund costs for salaries and benefits that impact the general fund, that impact where we end up in a couple of years, and so to the taxpayer component of that is, any investment on that side to do those buildings now means, what's our spending structure look like moving forward because you're accelerating your expenditures over revenue at some point, that becomes problematic, right? And then the ask and when you have to ask is changed from what it projects. The other side of this is adding those buildings to the fleet requires, although it reduces capital costs for all the buildings you just took care of, a rough cut of the numbers we know is of the roughly $125 million in capital improvement costs we have today to all buildings, regardless of the ones on the list, this set of projects eliminates some, but not all, it still leaves about $80 million of capital improvement costs over the next 10 years that have to be addressed. So if you, if you're reducing your PI to X amount of dollars, that dollar times 10 years is intending to cover the rest of the nut, whatever differences there are deferred projects or efficiencies we have to find, or they become projects whose cans being kicked down the road. So these are some of the big picture things that we want to keep in mind as we think about the financing options and scope on this, et cetera, et cetera. I think it, it all can be done. I don't want to lose sight of the really, really big robust picture down line, so just, and we, you know.
And we've already started developing.
Models.
Models for 2020, our bonds are paid off in 2024, 2025.
Yeah, we have a 27, in 27, we have a 2.21 mils of bond debt, I think that rolls off the rolls, which can come on the ballot earlier if, if a board or this board or this superintendent or whoever else wants to use that as an option with the community in the future for other projects, like all those buildings that are middle-aged now that haven't, aren't in the list, right? So we want to retain long-term community perspective on this, so there's no soriness in the rearview mirror.
Yeah, but we're, so we're, we're, we are looking at the whole picture long-term. And, you know, back to Dr. Kellogg's point, we want to make sure we're thoughtful, and we've been very thoughtful getting up to this point, but even going ahead at looking at future capital needs of the district, there's already effort in place to try to make sure there's ways of addressing that. So I don't want the board to feel or the community to feel that we don't, we're not, we're just turning a blind eye to the future. We've got our eye on the future as well.
John, I'm glad you brought up the $80 million in permanent improvements, the dollars that we need for that, because as I look at the Lego blocks, and I think you summed it up really well, by the way, Rick, I didn't think you talked too long, that was good, I liked it. And actually, the Lego blocks all belong to the community. And what we're trying to do is figure out the best way to use the Lego blocks that we have, because all of the money belongs to the community and all of the schools belong to the community. So everything we do has a very deep gravity to it. And that kind of just dovetails with what you were talking about. But John, as we think about the permanent improvement budgets, you know, we, I want to say worry, we have some concerns every year about what we're able to fund and what we're not able to fund with permanent improvements. What are the dollars that are needed? What's likely to be happening in the next few years and in the out-years beyond that as we look at permanent improvements? And I think as we decide where these Lego blocks need to go, one of the pieces that will be very helpful to us is to look very closely at what we have been spending on our permanent improvements, what we feel is much nearer to optimal to spend on permanent improvements as we look, not just at the buildings on the list, but also at all of the other buildings and all of the needs that are there. So it's important to me to understand very clearly where we truly ought to be before I can start thinking about what Lego blocks to move out of that funding category. Same thing as we look at operating dollars, because not only do we have to consider the operating dollars that will be coming on with any fleet additions, as you put it, to our portfolio of schools, but we also have to look at what we are considering doing in 2022. As we have looked at our current operating situation, and yeah, we are really healthy right now, which is a great thing to be, but really healthy right now may not be really healthy in 10 years.
That's correct.
Or even five years. So we have to really weigh these Lego pieces, not just for what we're looking at as regards projects to do now, but as regards what are the other Lego pieces that surround that and need to be incorporated within? The ability to have flexibility within that creation of the Lego structure, I think, is one of the main pluses that we have. You know, the idea of identifying stuff that we know we have to do and moving those Lego pieces into position allows us to move ahead in an appropriately conservative but appropriately forward-looking way and then begin to add those additional Legos as we move on. So I very much appreciate all this information. It's extraordinarily helpful, and it also helps because it identifies what are the other Legos that we need to be factoring in to what we're deciding about.
Are there any other comments from the board?
Yeah, just briefly, I want to thank you for addressing the realities of the intended and unintended consequences of the Tax Reform Act. I mean, many, many, many citizens of the United States may not be aware of the huge impacts to historic tax credit, to the open market, or new markets credit, to municipal bond changes that are a result of this thing. And while there's a lot of enthusiasm in a number of different quarters relative to this tax reform, if we're just simply reducing a federal income tax, but then pushing the burden of tax increases for local and, and larger-than-local infrastructure and redevelopment improvements, it's pretty much a net wash, right?
Right.
And, and I think a lot of people are missing that this is going to put tremendous pressures on our local communities relative to repurposing, redeveloping, managing, capital improvements, not just within school districts.
That's correct.
Within cities, within counties, within townships. And I really, really appreciate you bringing that to the table as well and factoring that into your models. Thank you.
I'll gladly come back and address the state and local government tax deduction and how that's also going to impact your ability to pass property taxes in the future if it's not working in our favor. Okay, thank you all for your time, I really appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Okay, take care.
Okay, I think the next item on our agenda is 5.02, summer school update. Dr. Eber.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, Mrs. Hendricks and Dr. Kellogg. So I think it's appropriate that I come tonight on a 60-degree January day to speak about summer school. But I will say that mine is a much shorter presentation, but necessary, David, okay? Absolutely. So want to go over summer school opportunities and much of this information is a repeat, but I really wanted to focus our presentation tonight on our middle school because that was a thrust of our, of our conversation. The last time I was charged with coming back here in January and sharing with you what we could do differently in January to increase enrollment. And I'm pleased to say we have something, and I'm very excited to share it. And it's what I love about this community. So we'll get at it here. So the first is, we're going to continue to offer summer learning opportunities for our students in high school through credit recovery course advancement. We'll have a course of our elementary summer intervention program, which serves our students in grades K through 3, as well as 4 through 5. And then our Almost Kindergarten program, which we still do for students entering kindergarten. But again, as you can see, big letters, Middle School Programming. Our locations and dates are here for the general public, that's all posted online. We'll be, we always look at buildings where we're not having activities, but also try to be centrally located in our community, but also will fit our program in terms of enrollment. And this is where we go. We always go to lately to Whittier Elementary for our PE program, partly because of its proximity to the JC pool, because we enjoy getting the kids out and using the swimming pool there, but also we can use the high school facilities and the grounds in and around Whittier. We'll continue to use our technology. I continue to come back to four years ago, we were revolutionary, we had, we didn't even have access to Chromebooks. But we're to the point now where we continue to have a one-to-one opportunity in the summer for our kids to use Chromebooks, and we'll continue to do with a blended approach, especially at the high school, using digital curriculum so that students can work at their own pace. And it's a wonderful opportunity for our kids in the high school to be able to do that. You can see here our platforms, again, Apex, we continue to use Star Reading as well as Math and Lexia for K through 8. For our high school program, that is again, for students entering grades nine and above, they can recover credit and they can take new credit. They usually take just one course, and last year, we were able to decrease the price of our summer programming for our high school students wanting credit recovery from 400 down to 100, and we'll be able to maintain that price structure because we were able to prove its viability last year. The elementary program, we'll continue to focus our students in the areas of reading and mathematics. Of course, we want to prevent that summer regression and have data to support that we can do that through our programming. Almost Kindergarten, we continue to publicize this, it's a five-day program, it's really intended for students that have not had preschool experience, but our parents and families that would like an opportunity for their kids to come into the school, get a nice, get an opportunity to work with a classroom teacher in a Westerville school this year at Anheuser-Schlepper Elementary and get, help get them ready for kindergarten, as well as the parent where they can drop the kid off and leave, okay? Yes, I said leave, okay? All right. Next is middle school intervention, and this again is the, the major part of our presentation here this evening. You recall that we've continued to struggle a bit over the years with gaining, getting students to attend our program. And in 2014, we had 32 students, and that's kind of the amount that we had had prior, and we said, we need to increase that amount. So we provided transportation, that's a novel idea, right? So we added transportation, certainly. Certainly, there was an expense to that, and we've been able to pretty much triple our enrollment. But at the same time, 85 students, we recognize out of, what, 3,000 students in middle school, where we're only getting 85? And again, these are most at-risk students, but we need to continue to attract them to our program, and what could we do? So we always look at partnerships in our community. And so we'll continue to partner with the Westerville Public Library, especially in our elementary division, where we have robotics programming that'll come in and work with us. The library wrote a grant last year. I reached out again this year, and they're going to come back in and do some robotics with our students. But at the same time, as a member of the Westerville Parks Foundation Board, I was able to sit in on conversations and learn of an opportunity here in our community. So I asked Randy Aller to come and speak about that. He's the Director of Parks and Recreation here in our school district, or excuse me, in our school community. And I asked him to come and speak to you and kind of set the tone, and then I'll get into the nitty-gritty of how all this is going to come together. So Randy?
Thank you, Scott. Good evening. I'm excited to share with you an event that we have planned for Westerville this year, and it's the Westerville Pumpkin Glow. Now, you may wonder, what is a pumpkin glow? If you can imagine a half-mile trail with 4,000 to 5,000 pumpkins glowing like this, and as you're walking along this trail, you come across different scenes and sets, and you have pumpkins that are etched with intricate detail, as well as jack-o'-lanterns, and it just creates an experience that is an amazing experience, quite frankly, for people of all ages. This type of event is not offered anywhere in Ohio, and we're going to take a stab at that this year. We're going to engage the community. We need a lot of help to pull this event off, and we think that there's an excellent opportunity to partner with the schools with this with respect to the middle school program. The event will be in October. It'll be two weekends, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, October 18th to the 21st, and then October 25th to the 28th. So with that, I'll toss it back to Scott, let him share thoughts on how we can partner.
So you may say, okay, what does this have to do with Westerville Schools' middle school?
Well, wait, just a quick question. Where is it going to be held?
It'll be held at Heritage Park.
Heritage Park.
It'll be along the, we have a accessible trail along the back portion of the park. There'll be a pre-event area by the Antrim Shelter, and then the event itself through the back portion.
The last time I carved a pumpkin, I cut my fingers several times, so my wife won't let me do that anymore. But I, but I think Nancy would do a good job at that.
Oh, yeah.
We'll take all volunteers.
So this opportunity is not something that you just start October 1 and proceed. It takes a lot of planning and preparation. And in thinking about this, at this, at the various meetings I've attended through the Parks Foundation, and then getting with Randy, it really made me think this is, this is the hook for our middle school students this summer. And what we look to do, you know, during the summer, we truly look to fill in those academic gaps. Again, we focus on reading and mathematics, but we also wanted to bring in all the engineering opportunities that we have for our students and look at a steam through science, technology, engineering, art, and mathematics. So we're going to continue to do the English Language Arts, the Mathematics block, but we're going to add a third block, and that's the steam piece. Okay? So what students will do, and you can see here, I have some more scenes, okay? So this summer, students are actually going to be working with the Parks Foundation, excuse me, with the Parks Department, as well as with an art teacher here in our school district, as well as one of our engineering teachers, along with other people that I'm sure we're going to grab along here to help. And students are actually going to create the sets and the designs for what you'll be seeing in October. And as you can see, this isn't something, again, that you just throw together in one weekend. And you can see all the elaborate pieces here of other communities that have done this, again, not in Ohio. And these are what are called funkins. And funkins are pumpkins, okay, that are made out of styrofoam. And as you know that, what's that?
Fake pumpkin, funkin.
Yes, exactly. Right on. I think those look really real. Okay? And so what we're going to be doing is, in our engineering classrooms, our students are going to be actually designing these funkins, okay, and cutting them out using our lasers and things like that in the engineering program, because these sets are the backdrop and help make up this type of sets, okay? Because you really couldn't create and carve all these pumpkins in a matter of just a couple weeks. So you have the funkins in the background, right, Randy? And you have some authentic, real pumpkins as well, but they all look mysterious at night. All right? And of course, this is authentic, it's real, and then coupled by the fact that we're going to continue to engage our community in marketing and media, and through our Language Arts classes, they'll be helping to write the press releases and getting the word out. So truly, it's an integrated community partnership, and it's relevant to the kids. And the beautiful part of the students that participate in our program, they, along with their family, will receive free tickets to the event. And they'll be able to see the product. And my hope is that even throughout the school year, that they'll continue to help work on this all the way up to the day of the event. And I think we'll have major buy-in among our students for this.
I think this is a really great idea, Randy. I'm so glad that you're including us in this in this way. It's great, it's a wonderful learning opportunity. It's exciting to do, and it can involve, obviously, our summer school kids as we kick off with them, but involve, grow that outwardly, and include more grades and more kids, and really make that a strong community effort. I love it.
Yeah, and we'll, of course, be taking these pictures and helping, that'll be a part of our packet that we send out encouraging middle school students to participate, because they'll be able to see that they'll be helping to create this. But, you know, again, we couldn't have done this four years ago because we didn't have the engineering tools to be able to do it. And Randy was, I loved it, because when I first told him, I said, we have that, those tools. Because he was trying to figure out how he was going to create, do all this. So he has the manpower, the tools. We get started in the summer. It all just kind of came together for us through that dialogue. So truly, that is our program. I hope that we've met your charge of looking at to do something different in middle school, okay? I think that's, I think we accomplished that for you. So we'll continue to focus, of course, on all these areas, continue to focus on our budget, to try to make sure that we meet budget, but at the same time, expand opportunities for kids.
Speaking of budget and the cost of the courses, do we have any opportunities in the works, or are we considering how we may want to go after scholarships for kids who may want to participate this summer? So as we look, we've done a heck of a job reducing the cost, and I am very, very pleased with that. But I still know that cost can be a barrier. So as we think about, you know, even the, this wonderful Pumpkin Glow project or whatever, as we look at identifying additional community partners to bring into that work, I'm wondering if there may be also an opportunity to provide some scholarship dollars for students to attend the courses that will lead to the Pumpkin Glow.
We do provide opportunities for our free reduced students to pay a lower cost. You are correct there. And we are continuing, and actually with Dr. Lucy Rader-Brown, we're looking at grant opportunities out there to help support students. We just had that conversation today again. So always looking at opportunities to help fund, encourage, yet at the same time, make sure that students have some, you know, skin in the game, if you will, okay? In other words, have, provide some financial, there's a means for that, so, okay?
So remind me, I think last year, when you came back and presented how summer school went, that we ended up not, how do I say this nicely? You had more kiddos wanting to go to summer school than we funded for.
Right.
Did we fix that?
Yeah, we ended up having a waitlist last year, and I'm working with Barb Wallace. Dr. Kellogg and I had a conversation last week about this very topic, of ways in which we can ensure that if we have students that desire to come, how can we provide that opportunity to them?
So was it space, or was it?
From a budgetary standpoint, you know, as I mentioned the last time, resources are not infinite, and we have a certain amount, just like what you're wrestling with, with this, the facilities. We're looking at it from a summer programming. So, because, you know, granted, it might be another $30,000, but then a $30,000 here, and then it all adds up, as we well know. But my, my true desire is to not have that repeat again.
Sure.
So I'll continue to advocate the best that I can.
Oh, I think we all want to hear. Thank you for doing that. And thank you, you do such a fantastic job with partnerships.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Any other board comments? All right. Thank you, Dr. Eber. This is a great partnership, and I think it's going to be a really engaging project for middle schoolers, so I really appreciate that.
Yeah, and you're the first person, the first group to hear about this event, but I'm sure you'll hear a lot more. And it's a great opportunity for our community, and also to support the Parks Foundation in our district. So thank you very much.
Okay, our next agenda item is 6.01, Public Comments, which we do not have anyone signed up for public comments at this time. So we will move on to 7.01. Can I have a motion and a second for the financial reports and investments?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Hendricks?
Good evening. Thank you. Yes, we're presenting November and December this evening. I'll just talk about December, where we wound up. Year-to-date receipts for the general fund are at $87.1 million. Year-to-date expenditures, $82.6. Our unencumbered general fund balance at $91.3 million. All funds, year-to-date receipts at $115.2 million. Year-to-date expenditures, $116.3 million. And our unencumbered fund balance for all funds at $105.2 million. So that's where we are ending December, looking good on track financially with our budgets. I also wanted to mention, as David mentioned earlier, about the SS valuation increases, and he was correct, we are at $281 million after this last reappraisal, and that is a 12% increase in our SS valuation, the largest we've had since, I think, 2006. So definitely helps in the capital fund and in the general fund. We will start seeing a little bit more revenue there as well.
Any board comments or questions? Okay, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Burton?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes. Okay, our next topic is personnel. Is there anything that we need to pull out, or can we consider 8.01 through 8.09 as a group? Okay, can I have a motion and a second for the group?
So moved.
Second.
Good evening, President Cotter, members of the board. Tonight's agenda contains nine sections involving 96 persons. Section 8.01 is the resignation of five classified employees and five substitutes. 8.02 is the resignation of one teacher and one athletic events assistant. 8.03 is a leave of absence for three classified employees. 8.04 is a leave of absence for two teachers. 8.05 is contractual status change for 10 classified employees. 8.06 are one-time payments for two administrators and 13 teachers. 8.07 is a temporary change of assignment for six classified employees and two amended end dates for previously approved items. 8.08 is the employment of eight classified employees and six substitutes. And 8.09 is the employment of two home instruction tutors, five athletic events assistants, a field supervisor, 23 supplemental contracts, and one amended item from the December board meeting.
Any questions or comments? Okay, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Burton?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to the agenda to item number 9.01, Revised Policy 7300, disposition of real property and personal property. Do we have anyone here that's going to talk about that tonight, or?
Mr. Dorn, are you prepared to talk about that one?
Nothing to change. Just to change in the calendar.
Okay, can I have a motion and a second to consider this policy?
So moved.
Second.
Does anyone have questions or comments on this old business?
The only comment I would make is, there have been some questions about this from some community members, and I encourage everybody to become familiar with it and to understand what it says, because, yes, the law is that we have to offer buildings to charter schools first.
Okay, can you please call the roll?
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes. Okay, moving on to new business. Item 10.01, Revised Policy 8330. Can I have a motion and a second to consider this? Oh, no, we don't have to consider it. Sorry. Go ahead, if you want to give a presentation, thank you.
Good evening, President Cotter, members of the board. Policy 8330, Student Records, is recommended for revision in order to include House Bill 359, Safe-at-Home Address Confidentiality Language. The board previously revised policies with this language. We're just updating this policy to include that language now. I'm happy to answer any questions.
No questions. Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to 10.02, Revised Policy 8600.04, Bus Driver Certification.
Good evening, President Cotter, members of the board. I am proposing a revised to Policy 8600.04, which is Bus Driver Certification. House Bill 388 made some changes recently as far as OVI convictions for bus drivers. In the past, they allowed you to look back six years. They passed a law that's saying that you have to look back now 10 years. So approving this will make our board policy compliant with the new RRC code, and then that's our recommendation that you adopt the policy.
Okay, any comments or questions? No? Okay, thank you, Mr. Wineset. Okay, moving on to 10.03, First Reading for Project Lead the Way Engineering Pathways, Civil Engineering and Architecture Course of Study. Is there someone here to give a presentation?
I believe Ms. Knapp is here with that information.
Hey, come on up. Thank you, Ms. Knapp.
Good evening, President Cotter, members of the board. Over the past several years, we have grown our engineering pathway to include a 7th-grade required semester course, which is known as Engineering and Design, as well as two introductory courses in the high school, Principles of Engineering and Introduction to Engineering and Design. All of these courses are provided through Project Lead the Way, which is a nationally-recognized curriculum, so similar to AP in that regard. A team of teachers met throughout the course of the year with industry people in our community, as well as post-secondary representatives. They included Jeff Becker, Dennis Blair, and I want to thank them. They gave their time to help us really develop this course, kind of talk through what was necessary, what they saw as industry partners, what members from Columbus State and Otterbind saw as needs. They really wanted a course that wasn't going to be so specific to engineering, but really a course that would provide a wide breadth of experiences for our students. So I do want to thank them. They were extremely instrumental. Erin Bender from the STEAM Center, and Dr. Adele Wright, and Mark Gurco from Columbus State. So I want to take a moment and thank them, and I'll thank the teachers at the end, if that's okay. So even for students who do not plan to pursue a career in the engineering field, CEA provided opportunities to develop highly transferable skills in collaboration, communication, and critical thinking, which are relevant, as you know, for any future coursework or career. It is the third course in our high school and covers the fundamentals of building design, site design, and development, and would be offered at all three of our high schools based on enrollment. Students apply math, science, and standard engineering practices to both design, to design both residential and com- design both residential and commercial projects, and to document their work using 3D architectural design software. This course provides students with skills to fill a workforce void in advanced manufacturing and engineering technology. If you recall back in early 2014, when we had the Straight A Grant Pathways, this was identified. We identified business, or the community identified business, advanced manufacturing, and health, and so we have worked to develop courses to complete each pathway. The only pathway that is yet to be complete, meaning that it has four courses, is engineering, because we started the health pathway in high school, we started the business logistics pathway in high school, but we had started this in seventh grade. That's what the group that we were collaborating with decided, so we waited to add the first engineering course in high school when those seventh graders were ninth graders, became ninth graders, or rising freshmen, I should say. So if you're wondering why the other two are complete and this one isn't, that is the main reason. There is a fiscal impact to start up this course. It would be $5,000 per school. Those are just the resources that would be needed. Another resource would be computers, as I mentioned, the 3D software, and that would be $46,000 per school. It's not something, unfortunately, that can run on a Chromebook, so these would be class sets, 35 computers roughly, at each of our high schools. And then what Project Lead the Way does, which is really incredible, is it offers extremely intensive training for our teachers to be able to develop this curricula. Maybe at some point down the road, I would love to envision that we can do this in-house and we can design our own courses, but we're just not there yet with this level of expertise that Project Lead the Way offers us. So to send our teachers to these educational opportunities, it would be about $5,000 per teacher. The teachers involved in this, I want to say the work was led by Ann Baldwin and Lindsay Manzo, who did an outstanding job, and while I mention both of them in the same sentence and I have your attention, they were instrumental in redesigning our high school planning guide. If you haven't had a chance to look at that online, it is absolutely outstanding. And the teachers included were Ken Scharf, Laura Ferguson, Jeff Odom, Bill Wetta, and also Scott Gaddis. Assistant Principal at North was part of this team. And now I'd like to open it up to questions.
Not a question. First of all, very enthusiastic about the curriculum, it looks great, and the course of study. John, maybe this is, and I don't know why we haven't thought about this before, but maybe this is a process improvement we can take a look at. I know that it's in the talking points and the reference points, but could we maybe look to include a formalized financial impact analysis for curriculum or changes to courses of study going forward, where it's an additive document? We get a really good write-up on the actual course of study itself. I think the public, as well as us, it would be helpful if we had a formalized document around the financial impact as well. And I think that it may potentially need to be like a multi-year view as well, if it, yeah, yeah, so that we can understand what the cost impacts are. That being said, that's only just something that jumped into my head as part of this conversation, not in reference to this team's work, great job, I love it, it's just that we've had this conversation, I think, and then we have conversations with the board going, how much did that cost again? Let's go back to the notes, as opposed to be a little bit more formal.
And one of the things that I have collaborated with my team on was to develop a five-year curriculum plan in terms of the financial impact, in part to some of the conversations that we started around this time last year. I think it's definitely different when you have digital content, because you can't just say, oh, I know we've had that book for nine years or seven years, let's just hang on one more year and then we'll look for new. That license expires, so, you know, the course content wouldn't be available to students when we move into that online license year. So we have to be very thoughtful and strategic and have a long-term plan, as you're referencing, to make sure that that doesn't happen. And my team and I have spent quite some time on that, so we're in good shape from that, but I completely agree with your suggestion, thank you for that.
Appreciate that. Now, I'll leave off by saying this seems like a very reasonable price tag for creating opportunities for our students and creating a differentiator within school districts for Central Ohio. I think it's a great program, thank you.
Thank you.
That's a great idea. Appreciate you bringing it up, and I concur, I think it's a pretty reasonable cost for something that is a good bang for the buck. The pathways are four courses each, correct?
Correct, yes, so we would be adding one at the high school, so the middle school course doesn't count as the four toward, at least four, for CTE credit, if you will. So we have to have four complete courses at the high school for that to kick in and to consider our pathway complete. So we will be looking to add an additional course as the fourth year, and we've explored some different ones. There's roughly half a dozen other Project Lead the Way courses that are in the engineering pathway.
So you anticipated, my second question, was the sixth grade, seventh grade course a part of the Project Lead the Way? It's not, it's a separate, right?
It's a Project Lead the Way course, yes, we use their curriculum, but it doesn't count as one of the four, for CTE credit.
Remind me, what are the other two engineering that we already have?
We have, and I know them by acronym much better, so it's Principles of Engineering, which is the first introductory course, and Intro to Engineering Design. They use a lot of the same words, just in different order.
Okay.
Yes. And those are similar to HBS and PBS at health, those are the two that you take off the bat for your first two years, and then when we would add the fourth course for engineering, the third and fourth course could be taken interchangeably, if that's how we chose to offer it. But those two base courses would be required to move on from there.
The two base courses in the health pathway that you just cited, and the two base courses in the engineering pathway that you just cited.
Correct, yes.
And I think we, are we, are we at full four with the business logistics?
Yes, we are. And what we've done, we don't use Project Lead the Way for that. We've really leaned on using a lot of Columbus State courses, so we have a lot of college credit plus opportunities in that department that, because of the credentials of our business teachers, we're able to offer in-house, which is really positive.
Thank you, really, great stuff.
So Jen, this is an off-question. The kids, so I'm assuming these classes are taken freshman, sophomore year?
It could be, we do have upperclassmen in them currently.
Okay, so the younger kids, then, do they go to the Career Center after that? Like, does this entice them and then they want to go on to those engineering?
I would say that's probably a little too early to tell, but that's definitely something that we could look into and track. I could find that out. I mean, with it being the second year, I think we'd be getting some initial data at this time, but that would be a, that's a great suggestion.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions?
Just want to thank Jen and the team, both our internal team and the external members who worked on this. There's been substantial work put into this over a significant period of time, and it's really exciting to consider each of those pathways and how they have come to fruition, and how they're going to continue to come to fruition for some of them. As Richard said, it does put us in a different space than a lot of other districts, and it puts us in the space where we want to be, which is the more important thing. So I'm very thankful for all the work that everyone's done, and I know it's been a lot of hard work. I'm also very thankful for your foresight, and Jen and I have had a number of conversations about what all of this looks like in the out-years, you know, as we talk about what's going to need to be funded, what's going to have to be allocated, what our curriculum budget should look like going forward, because all of these pieces, as we shift instructional models, have repercussions for the allocations to curriculum. And I'm very comfortable with Jen's knowledge and approach on that particular subject, and thank you for that.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Jen, and for the team that worked on this. Next item 10.04, I think is also for you.
You are correct, thank you. Westerville South's International Baccalaureate Program continues to grow in participation. So in 2015, they were audited, as they're audited, you know, as every IB school is, and the recommendations really said that Westerville South needed to make an effort to diversify their offerings and provide more opportunities for students to benefit from the IB experience. So we do have a large number of students, not as, well, we have a large number of diploma candidates, or a good number of diploma candidates, but we have a large number of students who are enrolling in IB, just in one course here or another course there. In fact, in 2015-16, there are 140 students taking IB courses, you might know this already, and in this school year, we have 275. And really, Bill Hindmiller, who leads this work, attributes it in large part to the IB Sports Exercise and Health Science course, that was new in the 16-17 school year. So we brought it to the board, it didn't take off really at first, but it really has and has a lot of people interested in that course, and that course, too, came from a direct result from this audit. The addition of IB Theater SL for the 18-19 academic year will allow for growth in visual and performing arts, and in turn, adding to the increase of IB enrollment. It will be offered with existing FTE. IB Theater will provide a third option for students to meet the IB diploma requirement in the arts as well, and we currently offer IB Visual Arts higher level and IB Music standard level. So if you think about our visual and performing arts, that theater piece kind of completes the picture. And the hope is that it will provide a path to earning the IB diploma for a more diverse population. In addition, the addition of this course will increase our pool of course candidates or students who are not pursuing an IB diploma. As many of our students choose to build a course schedule that takes advantage of the many academic opportunities offered in our district, this would provide yet another choice. Teacher would be required, similar to Project Lead the Way, similar to AP, well, AP isn't required, but we do support all teachers attending that if they are going to teach the course, and that is approximately $2,000, not really much of a startup cost. There would be a student fee, and I apologize, forgot to mention this, with engineering, all of our science courses have a $16 student fee for consumables, and this would require a $25 fee to purchase play scripts. Thank you, I blanked, thank you. My daughter has many at home, I don't know where that went. So, questions or comments about IB Theater?
We have theater classes at North and Central, correct?
We offer them at all of our buildings. It's an Intro to Acting in a Theater course, or an Intro to Theater and Acting.
Okay.
Yes, and it's currently offered, there's one section taught at Westerville North currently, but yes, we offer those courses.
Could you give us a little bit more information about the content of this course?
I can't give you a whole lot of information on it, actually, and I apologize for not being able to answer this question. What IB does is it offers, if you've looked at the course guide, it's extremely, it's extremely large. Once the teacher goes through the proper, goes through the training, then they pick and determine, but it's script development, I mean, it's very similar to a basic theater course, but the teacher would be able to look at what the objectives are and then determine what pieces he or she would want to teach from that. So that's one of the reasons why, and I think it's something that we have tried to work through, but it's difficult for us, to develop a course of study that's similar to what our other courses of study look like, because IB doesn't really lend itself to that. So it is really up to the teacher to kind of pick and pull through that course to determine what he or she would like it to look like for students.
That said, Jen, it might help people listening, watching, whatever. IB talks about their curriculum model overview for this course, theater in context, theater in processes, and presenting theater. So the idea being directing and acting, but also looking at theater as a process, as a construction of art, as a construction of literature, and moving through that. So it's a typical IB approach applied to theater, which, I tell you, I sure wish I could take this course.
Thank you, Dr. Nestor Baker.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, well, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on to agenda item 11.01, donations. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the donations, which of course, we're, as always, very grateful for?
So moved.
So second.
Can you please call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item 11.02.
Good evening, Madam President and members of the board. The Office of Purchasing and Logistics have evaluated the listed private school and per the requirements of the Ohio Revised Code, and the two students that we have declared impractical. Approving this resolution would allow the district to offer payment alue of transportation in a manner provided by the Ohio Revised Code, and approving this would, we could pay them, the two students listed. The payment alue amount is still determined by the state. Any questions?
If I could just interrupt for a second, can I have a motion and a second to consider this item?
So moved.
Second.
They have to say it all over again.
Are there any board questions or comments?
Thank you. Thank you. Can you please call the roll?
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item 12.01, public comment. We do have someone signed up for public comment. I'll just read our introduction to the public comment section. Reminder that you have five minutes to address the board in the public comment section of the agenda. Please remember to address the agenda item that you were referencing.
No, I don't think this is open.
Okay. At the beginning of your comments, a timer will be shown on the screens, and Mr. Hershizer will call time when five minutes has elapsed. Please address your comments to the board and not to the audience. Our first and only speaker signed up is Ms. Peg Duffy.
ECOT shuttered their doors abruptly without much useful assistance to about 12,000 students and their families. I understand that 68 of those students are in the Westerville School District. I don't want to wade into the fray of the lengthy political and professional battle regarding virtual education. Let's think about the kids. Let's stop punishing them and their families for, as my high school Latin teacher always reminded us, sins of omission and commission. In this case, sins of both categories on the part of the lawmakers and the department. Even so, we have to admit the ECOT model was good. The summer school presentation that we heard mirrors similar approaches. ECOT's closing is an opportunity for Westerville to pull our students and our tax dollars that follow them back into the fold by addressing reasons that drove the families away in the first place. As I recall, several years ago, Westerville initiated a follow-up program to understand why people left for the alternatives. Unfortunately, many families who were contacted found the queries callous and condescending. Apparently attitudes haven't changed a lot. I heard of a frantic mother scrambling to re-enroll her ECOT son at one of our middle schools. The last thing she needed, as she ran the gauntlet of minutia demanded of her multiple trips to the office, was dismissiveness and a seemingly deliberate attempt to be as difficult as possible. If this is how one family was treated, it fractures credibility not to expect that others have suffered the same shameful behavior. Incidentally, OSBA's FACS advising districts on enrolling students for ECOT says that districts are required to accept students who are residents of their districts. Records are not required for enrollment. Records are not required for enrollment. IEPs are to be honored. College credit plus courses can continue. I have to wonder if those guidelines have yet to be fully disseminated here. I hope our board and administration are not satisfied to sit back and ignore those from ECOT whom some view as Westerville's discards. Families with re-enrollment experiences, like I have mentioned, may return, but likely only as a stopgap unless attitudes change. How about we try harder? We might look at efforts of a small district that is forging the way for re-enrollment. Garaway Local Schools in Sugar Creek, Tuscarora County seeks to help students already opting for alternative education to come home, to receive support through their local district. Garaway offers flexibility and options in its online academy. Better all around, it manages local dollars locally. Kind of a part of public education. We can recover students who've opted for alternative education. We could serve them and even more students with minimal change. We hear about differences in learning styles. Sometimes I wonder, we don't seem to go beyond lip service to that philosophy. Learning styles has one reason that many choose online education. Let's expand what the summer school presentation told us about blended learning. It gives the student greater control over time, place, and pace of instruction. Westerville has the Core of Alternative Programming already established within Academic Enrichment Center. We have staff there well-versed in online education. Innovative districts that reach out to their alternative schooling families could possibly get more of them back. We, too, can, if we re-establish the trust of those families by our actions and behavior.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments. Moving on to topic 13.01 in the agenda, board comments. Does anyone have comments this evening?
Just briefly, I know we touched on it several times during the financial presentation, but I think it's worth mentioning that this has nothing to do with partisan politics at the federal or the state level. It's just the reality of numbers. Based today on a dollar spent by a citizen in terms of federal income tax, the return is on par, $1.20. The reason being is that the United States, for a number of years, has been a deficit-spending nation. Ohio is one of only 14 donor states in the United States, meaning that we don't get our tax dollars back that our citizens pay to the tune of how much we contribute. If we think about that in terms of the presentation for just a second, I think it's very important to understand in the context of what we face in this school district, what the city faces, what other school districts and municipalities face, which is that the money that our citizens pay to the federal government in the form of taxes is not returned to us, which means that in order for us to be on par with other states, in order for us to be on par with states with, you know, educational systems that may be, you know, this tier, and we're at this tier slightly below, we have to extract additional money from our taxpayers. It's a very frustrating dynamic, and I think it's worth mentioning again, that the Tax Reform Act is only going to make that more difficult for states like Ohio. And we're not the only donor states. There are 13 others as well. But it means that we are continuing to give more than our fair share as citizens and not seeing that returned to us, and yet we are tasked with making sure that we provide a 21st century education to our students. We will continue to do that, and we've said this multiple times. The state, the federal government, are not going to keep us from doing what we've been tasked to do. But I think it's important that we're aware of the realities of math. And math says if you contribute a dollar to the federal tax funds and you receive 89 cents of it back, then there are going to be challenges in terms of providing the things that the citizens in your community want.
Anyone else have any comments this evening? I just have one. So to our ECOT students and families, we here in Westerville think this is where you belong. We believe in public education, and we welcome you back.
Yeah, I don't consider any of our students discarded, and that's an unfortunate thought if people have that. So let's redouble our efforts to make sure no student is left behind. Pardon the phrase. Don't, no student or family feels any left behind, and I'm quite sure we all agree with that.
Any other comments? No? Okay, then I'll move on to agenda item 14.01. The board will be meeting for a dinner meeting with the City of Westerville, their council, city council, on Thursday, January 25th at 6:00 PM at the Everell Barn Lower Level, which the address is 60 North Cleveland Avenue. And then, again, in regular session on Monday, February 12th, 2018, at 6:00 PM here in the board training room at the Early Learning Center. Oh, comment?
Just, not official board meetings, but just a reminder, Wednesday night, we're at McVeigh Elementary. It'll be our first community forum on the facilities project, so I think that's from 6:30 to 8:00. Thank you. And then Saturday morning, we're at Westerville South High School, starting at 9:00 AM, from 9:00 to 10:30, same presentation. So those are the first two coming up on the community engagement piece, if anybody wants to come.
Did you want to talk about the thought?
The Thought Exchange. So come Wednesday, I believe, we will push out an email to about 25,000 residents that have a link to our online forum for community discussion. That link is exchangeable to anybody who you want to send it to. You can forward it to other people. It'll also be available on our website page. You go to our normal website and look for Times Change, backslash Times Change on our address, and you'll get to our website, which will have all the information about the facilities project, the meeting dates, and also a link to the online forum for Exchange, through Thought Exchange, when we open that up this week. So there'll be lots of information, lots of opportunity. We're at the front end of the start. The first two meetings coming up are Wednesday and Saturday, and then it goes onward from there with six community meetings, closing up this first round of community engagement with the online component on February 11th. So get information, follow us on Twitter, check us out on Facebook, like us if you like, and there'll be lots of information for the community. Find out anybody in the community. This is not, the intent here is to broaden the conversation beyond those who feel most attached to our schools, to anybody in the community who wants to give some thoughts about the plan.
Okay. Thank you. And if I can have a motion and a second for adjournment?
So moved.
Second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Berg.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Velardo.
Yes.
Ms. Carter.
Yes. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. We really appreciate your presence tonight.